Thank you. Uh, we'll hold the in order and all rise for public reasons.
Welcome to the United States and America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, liberty as well as equality and justice pro.
Megan, roll call please.
Trusty Gaten? Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas? Trusty, trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Here.
Trusty Honey?
Uh, all here. Okay, uh, we do not need for two of this, we do not need more. Nation, four O, uh, and, Megan, four, all six?
Uh, conservation ethic. To foster conservation ethic among McCary County citizens helping all of us regardless of the basis for our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty, become educated about conservation issues, and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of including the natural heritage of our county's open space. Goal number five, to ensure efficient integration of key district resources, example, educational services, site planning, land facilities management, and natural resource management to maximize the overall effectiveness of the district.
Thank you. Trusty, the conservation spirit of this, uh, we need, like, do we propose to make a difference with cleaning up our water, wildlife, and waterways at the same time? All of this, like, in the same time, as healthy and sustainable as possible. Thoughtfully developed so you can have strong powers and be a part of this, to be able to understand what we're doing. Trusty, yes? Testing? If you do number two, I mean, the, I guess, number two. We will protect you and explore the other streets and rivers which help you to use your. Okay, we'll see if the next part will be better, but right here, um, at this point, it's, obviously, the six point O is election officers, uh, this was the three, uh, one that.
You start as our sitting president, you run until you get the next vote for president, and then you pass the gavel.
Oh, I also went to some of these, or, I didn't give them to you.
Well, you.
So, anyway, that's, uh, that brings us to, yes, how that brings us to nominations for president, if, and act officer and ethics officer, uh, the important nominations.
Okay, so what I was going to say real quickly, and I'm going to be in because I'm done in several conversations, but I know that I've reached out to everybody on the board, um, to let you know that I've been interested in serving as president for, at the coming year. Um, it's really, uh, would have been privileged and an honor to do so. I do recognize the difficulty when we come to the people who are in the same years, especially when they've been serving, and it's going to be straight ahead. Um, and I'm also, so as much as I am disappointed, uh, because I, I really do enjoy this agency, I've, I've put a lot of time in, I will continue to do so, I'm having a really good time, another year to go, um, but I also believe in the community, and, um, it will be kind of a year, and so, I know I'm still somebody's thunder, but I would like to remember that any for my.
Thank you. Second, okay? Second. That is the second, or, nominations. Who's the other ones?
Are there any other nominations? And are there any other nominations? Three times.
Are there any other nominations? Not, uh, we could see totally, we have a motion, we'll, yeah.
We need a, well, however, which way you want to do that, so, um, take a roll call vote, and then we'll figure out what's going on here with the, the sound here.
Trusty Fritz?
Yeah.
Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Yeah.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
Yes. So, thank you all very much, I, uh, look forward to another year, um, last year was first, I think, I think we were, we were like, we had other, I hope, in, uh, or, coming year, um, I mean, I've, I've, I've gone through a lot of presidential years, I obviously think of, uh, the Secretary of State, calls me in, I have to think of, when he gets on my elevator, and, you know, the older lady, she's been on the Secretary, and she kind of just gets on, and, and say that she, that I wasn't in the business of it. See, I, I, I would do like fifteen. And I'm sure the staff is kind of thinking that too, I've gone through a lot of these, and, um, so, I feel like, I have a hard working interview, and if, you know, please call if there's something you'd like to talk about, or, uh, maybe we can work together on it. That's, that's really, really find out, it's communication, even off, or, probably, like, I don't know, you know, working, testing, uh, and, and other boards, and, you know, volunteers, and, uh, they, they, of course, uh, working, you know, other volunteers, each other, and things, better, but, and, and, and listen to whoever, you know, whatever problems are, and, and, that working. That being said, our nomination for vice president, and, um, I, uh, let's discuss the, the, and, you said, did you, and, sure, we have somebody who needs that nomination? Linda? Is that a vice president or a second?
Second.
Second, Lynn? Any other nominations? Any further nominations? Any more nominations? Not, I will ask for a roll call.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
No, it wasn't yes. So, go your way, you being honest. Um, in addition to pressure, I reached out, and, um, Lynn Campbell, so, she being, you know, the, the, or, or, that nomination?
I'll call ahead, Matt.
Matt?
I'll start.
And Linda? I don't need further nominations. Further nominations? Another nomination? Not, roll call please.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
Yes. Congratulations, good. And that brings us to secretary, and, uh, Linda said that she, you know, that, that's the, the, uh, state, and, 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 that's secretary, and, and, second, any further nominations?
First, I don't know.
Lynn?
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Uh, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Uh, roll call?
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Cook?
Yeah.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
Yes. Congratulations. Anyway, uh, trust the outreach of the scientists, uh, do you, do you need further day, or later day, and we, like, that's all for a month, and, 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 some, 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 but...
Absolutely. That's it.
Or, presentation intervention, oh, is that, so, did you get, uh, achievement for excellent financials for, a year two thousand twenty-one, former finance officers, so, this should be, very nice, wow, that's a, wow, that's, if, if, if only I went for one more, and then after that, I just, yeah.
Under the boss, you're sitting there.
That's, good eyes.
That's an amazing apple.
So, what extra do you have to do for this, you know? Or, were you doing the everything you did when you were just getting a little?
The word's really based on what's called the, after the, it's a manual financial report, um, and so, there's probably fifty percent that was in it, not to, was above and beyond just a normal audit of annual financial statements, and that other fifty percent was just the narrative, and, especially water, especially in Moss's weather, um, a lot of this, it was bad, because that, it's all part of building out the water, so when somebody looks at it, it's way dollars, and everything, you know, the same, kind of, for, it's, you know, they can pass it, put it in the budget, all the necessary time in it, but, it was, it was just for that financial thing.
It is all that, yes.
And I, I gotta, I gotta compliment my staff, because, you know, seeing this place, they're kind of supervisor, um, you know, I, I put together the actual chapter, but, you know, having that clean water, and, 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 really, you know, really, really valid, or, the, 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 the,
1-2A, KWC 11597, 33 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter, tuning 1-2B, KWC 11597, 33 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter East, KWC 9036, 81.8 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Henning, KWC 10891, 73.61 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Cronsetter, KWC 11236, 11234, 192 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Randzino, KWC 10811, 50 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarters Rivers Edge, KWC 10812, 70 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Stadi, J2, 1-2A, KWC 10905, 39.25 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Stadi, J2, 1-2B, KWC 10905, 39.25 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter Twin Gardens, KWC 703, 194, 192.4 plus or minus acres. Kishawaki Quarter East Harbridge, KWE 11421, 36 plus or minus acres. Clomkin Prairie Schweiger, KLP 10956, 50 plus or minus acres. Luski Marsh, LUSKI, LUM 9841, 103 plus or minus acres. Luski Marsh, Marsh, Luski Shed Rental, LUM 9841, 1 plus or minus acres. Marengo Ridge Penny, MAR, M A R, 10126, 13 plus or minus acres.
What?
You okay?
I'm good.
12, they start all blurring. 12.11. Authorization for staff to begin the negotiation process on the joint Breslin Venture leases with current tenants on eight parcels containing approximately 360 acres within the following preserves: Glacial Park GLP 7, 10.9 plus or minus acres. Goose Lake GL, G O L 1-1 and 2, 45.55 plus or minus acres. Rush Creek RUC 4, 10 plus or minus acres. Stickney Run STR 1, 1, 7.5 plus or minus acres. Stickney Run STR 2, 20 plus or minus acres. Pleasant Valley PLV 1, 27.5 plus or minus acres. Pleasant Valley PLV 3, 58.6 plus or minus acres. And Pleasant Valley PLV 5, 187.9 plus or minus acres. Authorization for staff to prepare specifications and let bids for native seats for county-wide restoration projects, V I P number 07210801.
That's it. I didn't ask anybody if they wanted anything pulled, but hopefully I didn't.
Of course, I just read.
Okay, that was the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, Bill has a second. Bill seconds. Roll call, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, which is great. It brings us to 13:00, which is an executive session. I know it's strange to put it at this part, but we needed to take care of some business that's coming up. So I could use a motion for that. I am intending for that executive session to last about 30 minutes. That's what my goal was. So any of you that have to leave or anybody that's tuning out here, I hope you'll be back in 30 minutes. That's the idea anyway. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Linda, second. And Ray, also second. Roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. So Ian will go into executive session here about 30 minutes. Time to switch over.
Can you state what we're going into, what specifics of that act?
It wasn't written here in front of me, but I can do that if I find it on this one here.
2C11.
2C11. Okay. Pending and/or probable litigation of the Open Meetings Act and BS 120-1. So that's where we're in. Okay?
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Our apologies. We are experiencing technical difficulties. 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 Our apologies. We are experiencing technical difficulties.
Well, we should go. Well, we're not under that. We're verified because we're not legally, we're here in person, so that's just our thing. So we're good.
We're just Zoom now in person.
It's convenience.
Yeah, convenience in person. Yes. Okay.
I thought it was working now.
Excellent. Good. 15-2. Formal position on reestablishment of Coon Creek Greenwich District. Do I have a motion to table that?
I have a motion to table that.
Linda has a motion to table that resolution, and Chris has a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Moves us to 15-3, Conservation Grazing Lease with Ruder Bison. Is there any discussion on that or a motion?
I'll move that way you approve.
That's what I'm looking for. Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion from Bill to approve. Chris, second.
All right, you got it.
Now, is there any more discussion before I call a question?
No, this good presentation was.
Everything was very good.
Very good.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Down?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dayton?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to 15-4, Board Development.
Let's see if this works here. Okay, can everybody see that at home on your screen and everybody here? Okay, terrific. I just wanted to spend a little bit of time. One of the things that we talked about is ongoing onboarding and continuing education, and many of you are probably familiar with these items, of course. But I just wanted to do a highlight, and then you'll have materials that you can take with you also just to get you comfortable with the Illinois General Assembly site where all this information can be found as well as in your board resource information. So we'll take you through the ABCs of the Illinois compiled statutes. And of course, Andrew can speak to this probably better. I'm not an attorney, but have been doing this for a long time and helping in any place that you have questions, he can probably do a much better job than I can. So we're going to go through the specific, a few statutes that you all need to be familiar with, both for board and staff. There is a required training component that all public officials, they're mandated to complete the electronic training certification of the Open Meetings Act, which all of you have completed. You're required to do that 30 days. That was passed several years ago. 30 days once you are appointed to office. There's also a provision now, which Ray, Trustee Dayton, when he joined, he was able to go through the Illinois Association of Park Districts. And there's a provision there that you go to boot camp, and you can go through that training, and that will qualify you. Otherwise, you've got to go through the state and get that certification. But it's a great opportunity, a refresher for you to go through, and you can take it more than once. You can take it annually if you like, but you're only required to take that. And then all of these applications of all these statutes that we're going to talk about tonight, they go along with you during your term as a trustee, not only when you're seated here and you're present in a boardroom, but also as you leave the boardroom and you're conducting business in the community or you're communicating. You wear that hat. You are a trustee until the five years or until your term is over. So that's important to remind yourself of. There are resources out on the Illinois General Assembly site. I'm not going to link there just for our time this evening, and I may not be able to get us back efficiently, but I will send this out to you. If you've not been out to that area, there's a lot of things that you can pick up. And if you love reading or exploring what's happening down, it's easier, I think, to navigate at the state level at the Illinois General Assembly than it is to track things that are happening in Washington. But you can look at the legislation and laws. There's bills and resolutions, all the public acts. Once they are through, all the committees that are voted upon, they are given a public act number, like our statutes. All the Illinois compiled statutes are there, so the Conservation District Act and others to which we will be talking about this evening. And under the Conservation District law, because there's only five of us, the expansion, as you know, under the Conservation District Act, it is specific, but there's areas that we have to reference other acts to other units of local government and other areas because there's not that many of us, as compared to the county code or the municipal code or even the park district code, school districts that each have their own legislation. Just some background of our Senate and House numbers, we've gone over that. And then there's a dashboard which lists the session schedules, who's in leadership, what committees that they're on. And so as we begin talking legislation and work that we want to get the ears of our legislators, that's where you put in a witness slip to be a proponent or opponent if you've not done that before. And then, of course, the Illinois Association of Park Districts has a lot of information out there for resources on legislation. So let's start off. We'll talk about the Open Meetings Act, our alphabet soup of OMA, which is referred to. And it's to ensure that actions of public bodies are taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. So obviously, being able to have a meeting such as this, and we were under some guidance and guidelines under the disaster proclamation, so that we were doing things and were forced to move to this online format, but we're continuing to keep that in place. So it applies to all units of government, and since we are a unit of government, it's a special district that applies to us. As a seven-member board, the important number to know is that any four people requires a quorum. So to hold a meeting, we need four people present, and a three is the majority of a quorum. So that means two individuals can speak with one another. Three would be a majority. So then you would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act if you were talking Conservation District business. If you're talking, like we talked about, we're socializing, you know, you're doing that, then there's no issue of gathering, but that quorum number. We used to have committees where a committee was a representative group of three members of the board, and thus that made nobody, if you were on that committee, you could talk to somebody on another committee, but you couldn't talk among even to two people in your committee because, in essence, you were doing the work of the board. So we changed on that. So meetings, they define that as gathering of public officials, whether you're doing that in person or electronically. And, you know, to hold a meeting, you must have a quorum physically present for the purpose of the meeting. And there are an opportunity for remote participation outside of COVID and the pandemic where someone could participate remotely, but that would need to be approved by the board adopted policies, which the board has done, and the qualified reasons is for health, work, or a family emergency. Those are the only three reasons now that we're beyond the pandemic that you could participate and be a voting member in a remote. But we still need to have our quorum present in the boardroom. A violation, just something to be aware of, is that a majority of a quorum, so when you're communicating, be very conscientious of that in text messages or emails that would create a pentuporous, I can't say that word, pentuporous manner. So as you're going back and forth, or when you pick up your phone and you're in a board meeting, that is something to which can be subject you to information. Is someone out there observing? Are you talking with a trustee across the way? And so, you know, who are you talking to? So that's just something to be aware of. I recommend that phones are not used or looked at in the boardroom as best practice. But with emails, as we've talked about, you use your district email, and then you don't respond to all individual, no issue. But if you start that dialogue, now you're having a meeting outside the intent, which is so that you do the work of the public in a forum such as this where they often participate. Meeting locations need to be reasonably accessible and open to the public. So if we knew that we were having a big issue, and it was going to be controversial, and this room was going to be at an expanded amount, we would need to find another location. It would be our responsibility to find a location that could accommodate a large group.
So could we go outside and just step outside and have 100 people out there? Is that acceptable?
Provided that they could hear us, have audible, and be able to be accommodated. And again, I would say accessible for those with special needs, et cetera. That would be a reasonable.
I mean, if a whole group of people shows up here, we'd either have to close down the meeting, or we'd have to go outside. We don't have another room that's bigger.
But they would need to be able to hear and audibly to be able to do that, or we would need to postpone the meeting and reschedule it. And we do list on our agenda, we do have a notation of a continuation of a meeting as well, or we post it and give a continuation or repost with a 48-hour notice requirement. So that's why that's listed there. We are required at the beginning of each fiscal year, you'll note that we do a calendar of when our meetings are going to be held. So a year ago, we switched to having no committees and two meetings and a committee of the whole and the regular meeting on the Tuesday night. So we publish that. And so if you were to call a special call meeting, that can be added to the list, and we'll talk about the notification, which is a 48-hour notice to the meeting. But if we're going to permanently change our regularly anticipated meeting schedule, that's going to require a 10-day notice and an appearance in the newspaper to repost all of that. Okay, we just can't do that because that's a change, and our constituents are expecting us to be here on Tuesday and Thursday nights for their meetings. As far as agendas and postings, 48 hours notice prior to a meeting is required unless it is for an emergency bona fide reason. And we must post that. We operate and manage our own website, so we need to place it there. We also send it out to the newspaper. And we also, as you walk in, you'll notice it's at our principal office, so anybody can access and see what's there if they don't have access to the computer. And the agendas, they're very detailed, but it's required. They must identify specific subject matter, any resolutions, ordinances that are going to be the subject of final action. So that's why when we're in executive session and we're intending to take an action that's going to come out of it, if it's not on the agenda, we cannot take an action in open session. We'll need to wait a month or reschedule a special meeting to be able to facilitate that unless we anticipate, and then we can have that identified as an action item to be considered. Any person, public comments, we have two. That is not required for the act to have two, but we've established that as a way to be open and transparent, so anybody has the opportunity to address under our rules that we've established. And again, that goes back to board practice of how long they're going to be able to speak, how you can limit that, et cetera, and to address the officials here. Generally, public comments are only required to be heard. You don't need to entertain in a dialogue back and forth with the community, but it's there for them to provide comment and addresses. So every agenda that's posted, whether it be the call or a regular or special call, they all need to have a provision that members of the public can provide comment. Closed sessions, they may be held, but they're not required. So the reason why, as you know, the closed session is there to keep confidential information to ensure that from litigation or you're working through an acquisition that you want to maintain. You know, obviously, there's an advantage for us to have that during those negotiation processes. To not do that, you need to disclose the purpose why you're going into the closed session in the open session. It does not require that you announce who is going to be in the closed session. It is assumed that it is the board that is in the room during the closed session, and the board then invites the individuals of staff or counsel or others that need to be present. And you can only discuss the items that qualify. And then, of course, during closed sessions, they are required that they are recorded verbatim, as you know. So that is different. Where in open sessions such as this, outside the pandemic, and the proclamation is not required, and you can only vote in open session, as you know, everything has to be brought out. As far as recording of the public meetings, it is required that there's written minutes, and they need to be very specific to date, time, place, numbers of the public who are present or absent, a summary of the discussions. They're not verbatim minutes. They're just a general summary on all matters proposed and deliberated, and then the recording of any votes that are taken. And then the verbatim records, which this evening, through your action, you voted to allow those to be discarded. You must maintain them, though, for 18 months. So every six months, we come to the board with the clearing out of those that are no longer needed, and that is a requirement. We also then come forward with executive session minutes as well for the release of minutes. And so during a regular meeting, the guidelines are that, and generally, we're meeting monthly, so with the approval within 30 days would be appropriate. Or if we were meeting less frequently than that, we establish a monthly meeting that it's reasonable you can do it at the second, you know, the next meeting that you had. As far as the minutes, once you approve them, then we have 10 days that we must get them up on our website and have them available, and so we handle that. And then the only requirement, we, on our transparency portal, we have longer than 60 days, but that is the posted timeline that they must be up and available for the public to access. The reason why we keep them longer, which we'll kind of get into, is under FOIA, it allows for easy access and less freedom of information requests. As far as closed session minutes and destruction, we review those twice a year. I talked about that. The closed session, they must be maintained for a minimum of 18 months, and then they're destroyed. And then as long as we create the minutes for those, and those are what you're expecting to be released at a later time during executive session. Any questions about Open Meetings Act? If you follow that very well.
I have a fun feeling.
Okay.
So when I was actually listening to one of them, I had asked, because there's, I think, case law on, we're talking about our bison trip, right? And so there was something that was, where a government agency was going to go for a field trip, but they had gone in their separate cars, and it was found that that was not reasonable, that they needed to provide. It was not a convenient location, or they did not provide transportation for those people, for the public who might want to attend. So we move forward to having our field trip for the bison. We probably are looking at having some kind of transportation that if anybody in the public, you know, maybe a rent.
Yeah, if someone wanted to ride a long way, that'd be wrong.
Exactly. So I thought that was kind of interesting and was able to get confirmation on that during that meeting, but so.
Any other questions on the board? Andrew, anything I didn't hit on?
Oh, that was a nice high-low review.
Thanks. All right. Next, we're going to go into ethics and gift ban. And this cartoon actually came from a session at the Soria New Heights Conference that Trussler did, and you've had that information out in your resource file. But yeah, make sure everything is done ethically, within reason, of course, and we're all looking cross-eyed here. So ethics, and there is an act that will require both as board and staff under the compiled statutes, known as the Ethics Gift Ban, and it regulates political activities that officers and employees of the governmental entity can be involved with, and the soliciting or accepting of gifts or by offering or making gifts to officers and employees of the governmental entity. So just to define officer here in the language and in other acts as we go forward is specific to an elected or appointed, and it doesn't matter whether you have compensation, you are an official for this special district. And an employee means anybody that works here full-time, part-time, or contractual employee. And to be prohibited applies to also the spouse of the officer or an employee and the immediate family members that happen to be living in that household. So that's important to know as we go forward. Prohibited political activities, and this is very specific. So during time period, you know, during, for employees specifically, they are prohibited for any activity during compensated time. So exceptions would be on their vacation time, personal time, or taking compensatory time. Then they would be able to assist in certain things, but they can't be on the time doing that. That would be in violation. And you cannot intentionally misappropriate any district property or resource by engaging in any of these types of activities. So that would include using copiers, using equipment, paper pens, or things like that to participate in those activities. And it's not only for campaigning for elected office, but as we talked about potential referenda, there are limitations that staff can't, you know, with factual information, but as far as on-district time, employees can't be out there advocating to vote yes or no. So we are restricted from doing that. And there is no coercing or any type of an employee or others that they must participate or give to a campaign or attend a fundraiser or any of that. That would be a prohibited political activity to coerce or to expect. There is a quote-unquote for that type of activity. Prohibitive sources, who are they? It would be anyone that's seeking official action of an officer or an employee. They are currently doing business, or they choose to do business with the officer or employee. They are conducting activities that are regulated by the officer or employee. They may have an interest that could affect the performance of the official duties of the officer or employee. They might be a registered lobbyist, or they are an agent of a spouse or an immediate family member who happens to be living with a member of a prohibitive source. So knowing where those are and to be aware. Gifts, they come in all sizes and shapes, and some things may seem innocent on the front, so you kind of know it when you see it. But cash, gift cards, anything of just sort of watch or pen, you know, electronic equipment, food to go out to dinner, drinks, sporting events, boxes, entertainment, theater tickets, you know, use some piece of property for time, maybe a loan on something that might help you or a discount. Those are things that would all be classified as gifts. And, but there are some restrictions where the gift ban... And, but there are some restrictions where the gift ban, they do not apply, into which then they would not be perceived as a gift. And those would be things that would be provided to the same level of a member of the general public. So you're not getting any special advantage or special privilege. Anything to which you would or the employee would pay market value for, then that's not considered something, and that would be acceptable. Any contribution that is lawfully made under the Election Code, fundraised and in support, that is allowed as long as it's not done during work time, and what people do with their personal dollars, they're, they have rights to, and they're allowed to do that. If it's a travel expense for a meeting to discuss district business, then that would be appropriate. A gift from a relative that are related to that individual, obviously, we can accept gifts from our family. And if it's from someone else that you've had a personal friendship with, and there are some guidelines with that, you know, obviously, how long is that friendship then in place? What is being sought is, is that, did they receive it? And then they're looking to take a tax deduction on it, so you just need to be wary of that. But those are, those are reasons that the restrictions do not apply. In addition, many times, food and refreshments are an area of discussion, and you are allowed $75 per person per day on a singular calendar day, provided, and this is really important, that the refreshments and food are consumed on the premise where they were purchased or they were catered. So some of this comes in, it's like, well, somebody gives you a bottle of wine, and they, you take it out the door, and what is it? Is it a $200 bottle of wine? You're in violation, right? That wasn't consumed on-site. But if you were to drink a bottle and they were to give you $75 a bottle of wine on a single day, and that's all you had, that would be appropriate, as long as you consumed it. That'd be quite a drink, but, but as long as you consumed it in that location. Inter, intergovernmental gifts would be appropriate, so staff to staff for a board member, you know, you're giving things back and forth. There's bequests and inheritances. And then one of the key factors here is, though, that any item or items from one of the prohibitive sources in any calendar year having a cumulative total of over $100. So that, that's your, that's your threshold amount. So 75 per day, and then a cumulative total from any one source of $100s, plus or less per year. So best practice, if you're socializing from, with a prohibitive source, and there's a question to the value of the gift, pay your own way and keep your receipt. That's, that's a good way to get yourself out of trouble. But this, under the Employee Ethics Gift Ban Act, there is a remedy. Should by accidentally, you find out that, that something, you've done something, and maybe you look back and you need to correct it, there is an opportunity to do so, and there's ways in which you can do so. You need to take reasonable action, and you need to return the gift to its source, or you need to give a donation to a 501(c)(3) organization in time, and there's case law. The timeliness of that is key, you know. Doing it a year later, or even that, probably is not so good. So as soon as you know, get it corrected. Violations on this area, it's a class A misdemeanor, and there are fines associated with it. So it's important just to keep that, to be aware of. Any questions on? All right, then we move into Public Officer Prohibited Activities Act or Conflict of Interest. And this is to prevent elected or appointed officials that have direct or indirect financial interest in any contract or the performance of any work. And unlike the gift ban, this one, there is no remedy or cure for this violation. You've got to be sure that you're abstaining or not attending the meeting. If you abstain from meeting or not attend, and there's specifics to this, it's not going to insulate you from this, and the violation is a felony. So this is serious, and this is information that everybody needs to know. There are exceptions, and whether the official has direct or indirect financial interest in a contract with the district in a very limited circumstance, so it's the value of the contract is minimal, and I'll define that in a moment. Ownership of the company is limited, and ownership of the company is minimal, and those are the three areas. So we're going to break this down. If you have less than 7.5% ownership, then the district could enter into a contract, provided that the individual on board who has less than 7.5% ownership, because when we get into a category greater than that, we're going to go down another trail here. They have to disclose the nature and extent of their interest prior to the deliberations concerning the award, and they have to abstain from voting. And sometimes during that, an individual may even leave the boardroom and not be part of that, as best practice. And all contracts over 1,500 were awarded after a sealed bid. Now, our threshold is 25,000, so Andrew might be able to speak to this, but contracts under 1,500 may not be bid. We have a purchasing policy with authority that's granted to staff until we get to that threshold. But in this case, if there's less than 7.5% ownership, the interested, with the firm, that the interested officer, we cannot exceed the aggregate amount of 25,000 for its contracts within, with the district in the same fiscal year. Andrew, anything to add on that one for that?
Oh, you got it. I mean, as you can tell from these, these are pretty fact-specific, and the percentages get a little bit confusing. But no, that's, generally, once you have ownership contracts, we can get into the more details to analyze it. But no, you hit it at a high level, but it does get a little confusing at the end.
So that's less than. More than 7.5%, then there are some restrictions that are applied. And the contract value cannot exceed 2,000 per work, and then a total of 4,000 in the calendar year. Okay, so that's the maximum. So if you have more than 7.5%, and we're in that area, the district is not going to be doing business with that firm. We can't. We're prohibited. Okay, so, and in that case, it doesn't, we can still do it, but the individual who has that percentage would need to, the majority of others would need to deliberate and vote, and ensure that the contract does not exceed that threshold. And then, obviously, the interested officer, there's a common theme, must publicly disclose the nature and extent of that. And questions on that? And then, less than 1% ownership in any amount contract. So a lot of times, stocks of major companies might be Ford, it could be, you know, Canon or other types of things that we could be doing business with and that, it's a less than 1%. So again, you would still disclose, refrain from the vote and discussion, and that is a little bit more flexibility. Okay, last one is Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, and those are records. So anything that's produced, our records, reports, tapes, everything that we do at the district are records, and they are records for the public. But there are some records that are not available to be released due to their confidentiality, or there are some exemptions that council guides us with those requests. They may be a draft of board product that's between staff, that would not be appropriate. But any of the documents that come forward in our board packets, those are all accessible reports that are accepted, things that we bring through, contracts, all those items are available under FOIA. We do have a FOIA officer, and Megan serves as that, as well as Kristi Amuntagia at our police department. So there's a backup to handle the requests that come in. And we do have a required timeframe to respond to those requests. Five business days for individual requests, unless it's commercial, and then we have 21 days, so we have to stop what we're doing and search for the records. And that is why, as well, that we have through emails, et cetera, on our system, so that we're able to search and get the materials that we need to respond. We can request, if we feel it is an extensive request, to get additional time. And obviously, for those that have a large, and we know it's going to take on the onset, a lot of time, we'll go ahead and ask for the full amount of time at the onset. And then there's ways to handle some of our, we have current requesters that send things all the time, and then it becomes more unduly burdensome, and there's ways to respond to that.
How many people do we have? Do we have a number of people to do that, or?
No, we do. There's a couple here for purchasing that they'll go forward and ask, and we see those reoccurring, but I wouldn't call them unduly burdensome. I would say the district does not have any unduly burdensome FOIA requests now. And I would say with our investments that we put into the transparency portal and the details that we put through our board packets, one of the efficiencies is we have information accessible to them. So we don't get the volume of FOIA requests that we used to get because of our transparency portal. So that's, that's efficiency and effectiveness of getting all that stuff out and available. But when they do come, sometimes, you know, we've got to work with council to, to work, you know, to get a request. And of course, if someone denies, then they have, or we deny an exception, and they disagree, then it has to go through the public access counselor, and there's a process to that. And then the pack will determine whether we were correct in our standing to deny the request, or in part, we have to provide something that we have not done. But that is of the act that you should be familiar with, and I just wanted to, you know, make those available as an understanding. And I'll put the PowerPoint out in your packets. Any, any other questions? You guys know this stuff, so, and I think the board does a great job, but it's a good reminder for all of us to know these, since we're, we need to help you out with those matters.
Thank you. So 15-4, we'll move on to 16-0, Executive Director Report.
Okay, let's see here. We have got, just for legislative update, we were at the Damniac event in the city of McHenry this past weekend, and Senator Wilcox was there tabling and invited us to share the table to distribute information about the district. So we were there, and thank you to Wendy Coomer, she was there with me, and we handed out things and met people. So that was a great event on Saturday morning. And also, Chiquin, I donate a bag those in my car for you, life safety jet vests, so they could wear unsafely, go down. But it was a great event.
Which had done, I'm sorry, did?
It was the Damniac event.
Oh, okay.
And that, about third year, I think, they were doing the event, and, three, four? Four years. So maybe next year, we've got to get a team together, right, and put down the box.
Kayak.
But they went kayak down the, to the dam and back around again, so a great turnout. The Lake County Forest Preserve District has invited us next Tuesday night to attend a legislative meeting, kind of dinner and concert, for myself and board president. So to meet with their commissioners, as well as our elected officials, and we share some of our elected officials, but they're proposing a change legislatively, and so it might be a great opportunity for us to kind of see how the legislators are receptive to that, because that may be some work, because we have some future planning discussions on what the district needs to do, so that's up and coming. And then you've got all the material on all the strategic plan dashboard, a lot going on. I guess any questions that anyone had on any of those materials? We will be doing a staff picnic August 31st, and I'll send out invitations, but would like to invite the board to join us for that event. It's going to be during the noon hour at Lost Valley to celebrate our 50th anniversary. And that's different than the public event that you said for August 31st.
You said this was August 31st.
31st, yes. And that is all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Committee assignments. So Fox River, women, are you doing anything right now?
I think. Okay, so I think with Fox River ecosystem, this month is their picnic, and the next month is habitat. Roadside is habitat, which is going to be in conjunction with the Henry environment, environmental, under the Henry County, and McHenry Township is going to be hosting that. It'll be a site to see what they're doing to provide habitat along the side of township roads.
Okay. Chicago Wilderness?
We have a meeting, Executive Council quarterly meeting tomorrow, and we are getting ready to launch our Jedi survey, which is going to go originally, I shared that with you, we've been working with Cream City Conservation out of Milwaukee. And that data will be, not only will they be able to look accurately over the four states, but specific to the conservation district, and I'll send the link out if anybody's interested, it's by Zoom. So by that time, you might jump in on the whole morale, you're welcome to join us.
Farm Bureau?
Yeah?
I wasn't, I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right. Okay. IACFPD, IAPD, and NRPA.
The only thing that I'll say is that in August, there will be an Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Preserve District meeting, so I'll send that out. And then the IPRA, the work of the Conservation Forest Preserve Committee will be meeting again in August, and I think we're about at the numbers that we can officially become a committee, or a section of IPRA, which is exciting, because that threshold, and they're off and running. So we've got a lot of our staff that are involved with leadership, leading some field tour type stuff, and some exciting, different work to help with professional development.
Foundation?
Yes, July 13th, we met. Of course, everybody knows about the Camp Lakota acquisition, it's final, it's done. They are very excited about it. They plan on transferring to the district for three to five years. They want to have discussions regarding the opportunities for Camp Lakota use of buildings soon with the district. I believe the district, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, are, is going out to the site and looking at those buildings, evaluating them, and reporting back. Is that correct? Okay. They do want a joint meeting with the district sometime in September. So I don't know where that is, or what that is.
We can work that out.
Okay.
Sounds good.
There were two potential new directors who attended, Michael Triant, Pest County Board Chair, and Jim Heisler, Heartland Realtor, they were there, and engaged in the conversation. They are working to expand. They did vote to continue on with the Fox River Ecosystem Partnership. That's a 50 anniversary book, went to public, publish, oh my gosh, went out to print. Oh my gosh. 500 copies, I believe? Yeah, so they did that. They're looking for the board packet regarding projects. Yvonne is resigning as of December 2021.
Who is?
Yvonne. Pedal, pedal, saddle. So I think they, it was a great event. They were down this year because their food vendor did not provide free food. The canoes did not work out this year, and the water was low, so they were down a bit, but it was a great event. Great, the Great Outdoor Beer Trail Run, September 25th, from 2 to 6. October 8th is the Dover Wall unveiling, unveiling. I think, I, I do think. I think there's a huge push, and I'm going to have to say by Pam, to educate our constituents about the foundation, which is, which is great, which is needed, and what the difference between what the foundation and the district all of we work together, what the differences are, but how we work together. So I think there's a, there's a big push by Pam to let our constituents know the differences and how we work together, but who they are and who we are. So I think that's real good. Anything else that I missed?
No, you did a great job. It was a busy meeting, and it was a, they did it in a compact time.
They did. I was very impressed with that. I was heck grateful for that. So that, that's it.
Great. Does anybody hear Bendela Camp Lakota Buildings and John or whatever? Gabe has been also, so, okay, what did, what did you guys find?
Very cool.
But there it is everywhere.
Did we need more of that?
There's a, there's a, there's a lot of them. I haven't seen all of them. I've seen the, there are four big ones near the front that, that are in fairly well, you know, condition. They're, they're not falling down. You know, just bird's eye view, roofs on. You know, just bird's eye view roofs on at least one needs, needs to be addressed. There's a couple of, one, one block building that's fairly new. There's a couple of block buildings that are fairly new, steel roofs on them. The, the team has been out to, to quickly button them up, so to speak. Like when they left, they took, they shut the power off. We went out and turned the power back on because there's some pumps. We want the HVAC systems to run, things like that, until a decision is made. We've got to stabilize them and that. So we went ahead and did those kinds of things. We also, there were fuel barrels out there that some had fuel in it. We were able to figure out how to get rid of those or get that fuel out of there. So, you know, just those quick punch list items just to stabilize things for now. And then this, this, my team will be getting together to just do a quick evaluation of them. We're not going to have hard numbers to say it's going to cost this much and this much and this much. Lots of round numbers to take a look at. And then also honestly to take a look at which ones are feasible to even consider. Because there are a lot of them that are not. Beyond, if anything, and they abandoned years ago. The ones that they did use, they kept up fairly well.
Do you have anything to add, Gabe? But you saw it all from them, okay? All right.
I would just say hopefully the foundation can find some partners that might be interested in utilizing some of those buildings and contributing to the cost of their upkeep and preservation.
Yeah, I think that would be something that we need to discuss with our meeting.
One, one funny part of it was when the SAP first went out there, so facilities made the SAP, trying to figure out why, we heard the power was shut off. Power shut off everywhere except their lights were on in a building or two. Ed ran into it too somewhere, lights were on. We were trying to figure out why are the lights working here? Where's the power coming from? And then when you backed up, you looked at one of the roofs and one of the roofs had a set of solar panels on. So it was feeding, it was a live feed, sun's out, it's a live feed. And then it was kind of feeding back through the system. So it was a mystery for a moment or two and then we figured it out.
Nice to know it works.
Yeah, there you go. Green.
Okay, thank you. And MACOD?
Nothing really to report. I didn't, I didn't attend this month. They, everyone has, I think Elizabeth gives everyone a newsletter and from MACOD she reports that on everybody, but just Wonder Lake is the newest member. There is a, to the MACOD, Village of Wonder Lake. They highlight here that Don DeWitt, Senator Don DeWitt and Macochet and Wilcox are going to host a joint end of session town on Tuesday, July 27th at 6:30 at the Crystal Lake City Hall. If you're interested in that. And I write that on the information for next month, but we'll meet again before they give the gas, so. The Green Drinks, that's on Wednesday. It's always the first Wednesday of the month from 5 to 7. It's back in person at Duke's. It's a hybrid situation and we want, Zach, who's the owner, wants to max it out at about 30 people or 25 to 30 people just for safety and everything else. It's not a huge space, but they'll also be doing it remotely. So you can, there's two ways to get in there. Monarchs and Margaritas. Vince Moska is, yeah, right, he's an ecologist. I forgot which company he's.
He's with the Tate Associates.
Hey, okay.
He did that program as a whim five years ago and he can't keep up with the demand.
Oh, yeah, apparently. So that will be in August.
How many people do they normally get? Do they get past the 30 minute?
No, not this last time, but last time was July. So, and that was the McHenry County Connects. So it was the bike and pedestrian trails and so two, kind of hit, two people come in, Scott and John Paul. And then Emily, I think, came in remotely. And that was small. I think we had about 15 people. But we also had, but then again, it was July and we're, I think going forward, we just don't do July. Because people go on vacation, it's in Lowmore anyway. But the fact it's recorded helps because.
Where is it in Duke's? Do they go upstairs?
They go upstairs.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, so they have a room in the back and then, you know, there's places to congregate there and then around. And then some people will stay afterwards and have dinner. They are welcome to join with that. It's just, this really, we've only done it once since people have been back in person, so.
And you say that's the first Wednesday of every month?
Yes, and it's from 5 to 7. So social hours from about 5 to 5:45 and then they start the presentation, which usually goes about an hour.
John, bicycle group meet?
I'm sorry?
Your bicycle group, did they meet?
They did not meet, so there's no report.
Okay. And visiting McHenry County?
Didn't that, well, I was on vacation, so no report.
You were visiting somewhere else?
I was visiting somewhere else, not McHenry County. I was visiting the wilderness.
Does that break a rule of any kind of their group there? Okay. Anyone else have any other outreach groups that they're?
No, yeah, I will say one thing because we house, we had this conversation come up before, cycling without age. So my husband just ended up training to be a pilot. At first it was like, okay, there's no way for me to pilot. He's not going to be able to do this. He's gone a couple of times. They go out to the different nursing homes and they map out little routes and they take them for about 15 point a minute ride. It can be up to two people. And it's really turning out to be wonderful. We house one of them. I mean, I don't know which building we do that in.
It's in, it's in Glacial Park.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so we have one in Glacial Park. The other one is parked over at Shamrock Park, which is a new park for Crystal Lake Park District. And it's, I think this is going to be, it's a wonderful program. So it's nice to be a part of it that we help house it, so.
Okay. Brings us to public comments, too. Do we have anybody out there that wants to speak up?
No, they're here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then that leaves one item left. You'll move to adjourn. All right, Lynn has that. Who has a second?
I have a second.
Lynn will second. A little call?
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Dayton?
Yes.
Trusty Cook?
Yes.
Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. We're adjourned.